Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Trustees Agenda Public Meeting tonight. It is May 12th and the time is 6:02 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And as usual, we can rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, where nation, our God, indivisible, liberated, and justice for all. Thank you. So we'll get our public comment portion of the meeting. But before we do that, I just want to take a brief moment to acknowledge the many wonderful, hardworking employees that we have here tonight and members of the Village Community who have helped us out. So this is a very hard job. Just want to thank once again Charlene Kegel, that's our treasurer, Kathy Sweeney, who's our clerk, who just stepped out, Kat Styler, who works behind the scenes, and Karen Bontempo, who's on Zoom tonight. And we also have our building inspector here to know. So team, thank you very much for all your hard work. A lot of times, our Village employees are working incredibly hard and many times don't get the enormous thank you that they deserve. So any opportunity to be happy to thank our Village employees, we wanted to do so. Thank you to all involved.
So we'll begin our public meeting with the public comments section. If you have any comment, you could write your name down on the sheet and we can begin with those names. And then after that, we'll begin with anyone else who'd like to raise their hand and make a comment. And per our usual rules of order, please keep your comments to three minutes and also state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, we have Kevin McAllister.
Okay, Kevin, good to see you tonight.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Thank you. Before I begin, I'd just like to share your sentiment about Village staff as well. They do a great job. My name is Kevin McAllister. I'm founder of Defend H2O. We are a SAG-Ara-based environmental advocacy organization. I wanted to address Lake Agawam this evening as well as Village funding of water quality projects. On March 25th, I attended a meeting amongst environmental advocates with Dr. Gobler. And during his presentation, he addressed the performance of the hydrogen peroxide treatment and the ultrasonic sound treatment as well. And I would say that it, underperforming is an understatement. I was extremely, I guess, aware of the potential underperformance, but it came to fruition. That is in fact the case. In watching, I think, the Village and your applications over the last couple of years, you know, quite frankly, with hydrogen peroxide, I believe what's just been approved, if I'm not mistaken, is some form of algal filtration. These are all really addressing and trying to treat the symptoms as opposed to the real disease here. And going back roughly 10 years ago, as iconic baykeeper, I had commissioned some work from Lombardo and Associates identifying phosphorus as the principal cause of algal blooms. This is certainly consistent with the science on freshwater bodies. The recommendations was either some form of removal of the phosphorus or dredging. And you have heard me speak about dredging in the past. Ultimately, what I had read, I guess, in the press during the winter was at least an exploration for handling dredge spoils, de-watering, compacting it, and trucking it off. And I believe I said to this board before that this is a non-starter, you know, purely by its cost and the impact on roadways. What I had urged the board really truly to commit to a legitimate exploration was near-shore discharge of dredge sediments. And while we're spending a great deal of money, hundreds of thousands of dollars on what I would call gimmicks, quite frankly, you know, we're dismissing and just moving aside the real problem here. And I've also found with some curiosity, now the investigation into Old Town for dredging, presumably you've engaged consultant to do some form of exploratory study. And I guess a rhetorical question, you know, what is the purpose? I mean, have we really assessed that water body with respect to bottom, water quality, et cetera, to legitimize the need for dredging? And I say it's very premature. I would draw your attention back to Lake Agawam. I think we have to start thinking big, acting bold, really commit to this investigation, as I'm urging you. I had said at the preamble, my experience in permitting and biologic sciences runs deep. And unfortunately, the DEC, the regulatory authority, they're not necessarily up to speed on their own regulations while we're dealing with young staff members. And lastly, as a bit of a segue into the larger 30,000-foot view, last summer, I contributed to the master plan process. I will urge the Village again, you need to take a real holistic look as the flood zones relating to sea level rise, you know, one foot rise, where is that water going? And to really be aggressive with overlay districts or buffers and infiltration areas. So we have to move away from these cosmetic lawns that are contributing chemicals and do very little for, again, attenuation of floodwater. Thank you for the latitude to speak.
Thank you, Kevin. So thank you. Usually, this is a good opportunity for us to listen, and that's primarily what we'd like to do tonight, given that this is a topic that we're very passionate about. I just wanted to address a few things to the public, just to let everyone know what we're working on. So first, you know, Kevin had mentioned symptoms and long-term solutions. We're addressing both. Obviously, long-term solutions have to do with making sure the nitrogen is removed from the groundwater, as well as the phosphorus removed from the bottom of the lake in the form of dredging and other types of projects. And we've also are taking a big step in reducing road runoff. One thing that we're going to be very happy to announce next month is over $1 million of grant funding to install a bioswale right behind Village Hall and redo that entire parking lot while installing natural plantings and perennial paving in that parking lot. That was about two years of work to get that $1 million grant. So I'm sure you'll be happy about that. And then I'd love to, you know, connect with you outside of the meeting about the dredging process. We could use your help. We have proposed exactly your plans to the DEC as far as that, you know, distribution of sediment. The DEC is unfortunately opposed to that methodology. But if we can help, you can help us with that and that lobby to the DEC, that would be extremely effective because it would dramatically reduce the cost of the dredging. And then as far as Old Town Pond, we're making great progress thanks to our Clean Water Committee. We're installing a bioswale on the eastern side to help with the road runoff. We are installing a constructed wetlands, which we rewarded over $120,000 grant from the town WQIP. And we actually have done sediment sampling for Old Town Pond, and we actually had some good results as far as the organic sediments in the bottom of the lake. And that will actually make dredging more easy to do and less expensive, given that we actually might not have to take that sediment off-site as the DEC is suggesting we have to do for Agawam. I won't take any more of everyone's time as far as some of the clean water activities, but it'd be great to have your help, especially working with the DEC, because they've, while we have a great relationship with them, it's often sometimes slow to get feedback from them and sometimes difficult. But we're happy to have the relationship that we do. So anyway, thank you very much for those comments. They were extremely helpful, and I hope that was somewhat informative regarding the water quality issues. So is there another public speaker?
Yes, Nancy McCann.
Thank you.
How are you?
How are you, Nancy? Nice to see you.
I have to re-ask them. On the rental permit law, I have concerns regarding this law. I don't know how the Village will be handling inspections of rental permit applications within already overburdened, reduced staff building department. If you decide that the owners will be put on the owner filling out questionnaire regarding your home, I'm still concerned about Village Flyville.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in for a second here?
Sure, Ken. Sorry, Nancy.
Apologize to interrupt the speaker. If the speaker would like these comments to be part of the public hearing, I think she should wait until the public hearing is open so that they're part of the record. I'm not saying that you can't speak now. That's all well and good, but if you wanted to make it part of the record concerning the public hearing, you should wait for the...
When is the public hearing?
It's going to be about five minutes.
It's going to open up in a little bit, okay? So I apologize for interrupting.
Thank you.
And can you leave the hour? I'm going to wait for...
Okay.
If you'd like to speak to any of the public hearings, I just wanted to trust the audience. There's three different public hearings out there to sign. Would you like to speak to that?
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. I'm here to ask a few questions about the budget that was presented at the public meeting on April 12th. And I asked that if you don't know the answers today, if you could kindly answer them at the next public meeting, but not at the next work session, so that people can interact with you on your answers. But I'll put this down. I don't know if anybody can see that. But at the last April 12th meeting, you had shown, I don't know if you can see that. Yeah, I'm sorry. Oops. Do you want me to switch it around? Okay. So anyway, at the budget presentation, this chart was put up. And when I went back to look at the audited financial results, it showed an unassigned fund balance of $10,373,000.
That was... I'm sorry, myself.
I thought that was a fast three minutes. Boy, they're really getting pretty close to three minutes. So anyway, it showed 10.3 million. That shows 10.4. I'm sure it was just rounded up. I don't know how those numbers are added up, but it seemed right. But then it dropped by 2 million, down to 8.4 million. But when I read the audited financials, the financial statements show that revenue went up by 3.6 million. And another, and actual expenditures went down by another 1.5 million, mostly due to savings and employee benefits and transportation. So that's an additional 5.2 million. So I wondered where the 5.2 million went. But then when I went to look at the updated presentation, the adopted budget onto the website, that number had changed to 10.3 million. And there was no mention of it at the work session, that that significant unassigned fund balance had changed. And I didn't know if you knew why that number was 8.4 two weeks prior.
I can answer that question. If you look at that chart, you'll see the asterisk in the bottom right-hand corner, and it says $3.7 million assigned to the Clean Water Infrastructure Fund. So that's the 3.7 million dollars you're referring to. And that money can be used for any clean water infrastructure projects, or more importantly, it could also be used for our sewer. So we thought that was a very good opportunity for our Village after we were able to make sure running a disciplined government and had an operating surplus, and then put that money aside and earmark that for water quality and infrastructure, which is much needed in the Village.
Okay, but that's the unassigned fund balance. So when you look at your audited financial statements, then the end of 2020, it goes back to 10.3. If you're talking about the 3.7 million, that has to be in a different account. That has to be in the capital budget account. That's not in the unassigned account.
So that would be restricted?
Restricted. That's what I meant to say. Thank you. So I just didn't know why that was $2 million less. I think it would have been helpful to maybe mention that correction so that people were not confused, but I know how hard budgeting is. I get it. The second question I had is, I looked at your employee benefit expenditures, and I noticed that in compensated absences for employee benefits, it appears that an expense was never taken in 2021. But if you go back 10 years, for eternity, we've been budgeting at least $250,000 to $300,000 a year and setting that aside in reserve. And I think you even mentioned at one time, we had a reserve bucket as high as 1.2 million, and averages around $800,000, $800,000 or $900,000. Then when I looked at the Village financials, it shows that it was expensed. So there's a little bit of a disconnect on compensated balances here.
And that's actually an accounting adjustment. We had transferred the money out as part of our year-end transfers, and we transferred money to our capital reserves, transfer money. Our new auditors came in and instructed us that we wouldn't actually afford the expense, but we would allow the unexpended amount according to their accounting protocol to close into fund balance and then transfer it after the year-end closes to unreserved fund balance and restricted fund balance.
So then are you going to switch the budgeted amount of 300,000 out of the budget? Because it shows zero, but you budgeted it the next five years at 300,000.
We budgeted, we budgeted for 300,000. That allows us to, more, we consider a budgeted item that's supposed to be allocated to restricted reserve is budgeted. There's really no part expense that comes out of it. Year-end closes with a $300,000 perceived surplus. That surplus is then done through an accounting transfer from unreserved surplus of fund balance to reserve surplus.
Okay. And then the other question I had is, there were a lot of items budgeted for that had a $0 next to it, and one of them was $1 million for paving and drainage. So it was budgeted at a million plus, but then it showed up as being zero on the budget. I can show you that here.
On the budget?
Yeah. On your, on your adopted budget, page 1939, it shows 2021 actual is zero for paving and drainage, when the original budget had that at a million. So I was just wondering how we...
Is that 2021?
2021.
I was not, we did not hide that from people.
Okay, well, it says zero, and I know we budgeted at least $1 million. So I don't know where that $1 million went. So I'm just asking, if we took in 5 million and we didn't spend a million here, that's 6.2 million, and our fund balance is not 8.4, it has to be much higher. And if it is much higher than what the audited financial statements state, which is 10 million, then where did the money go? That's all. We had 6.2 million more than we expected, and that's not reflected.
I think you should probably send me these...
You know what? I'm so sorry. I made a mistake. I actually have it all, all the pages, and I meant to give this to you, thank you for all.
Thank you.
That's the unassigned fund balance at the end of 2020. But how could it have gone down in 2021? We had 6 million more dollars.
Because it's 3.47 million allocated to restricted reserve.
Okay, but that still leaves 3 million.
But we did not have a $6 million within year surplus.
We had 5.2 million, according to the audited commentary on page nine, if anybody wants to see that. It shows the revenue went up by 3.6 million, and then the expenses variance was 1.5.
That's an increase year-over-year. That's not a within-year. So total revenues less total expenditures are what your operating surplus is. If your revenue has increased by a certain amount and your expenditure decreased by a certain amount budgeted year-over-year or expended, you still have to apply actual revenues and actual expenditures to get to your operators.
Right, but this was state aid and mortgage tax revenue that exceeded what was in the budget by millions. It says it right here.
This is May 31st, 2021. This is the May 31st, 2021.
Right, that was the ending balance. That's the starting balance as a reference point, that 10.3 million. But then it couldn't have dropped down to 8.4. And it was, it looks like you've adjusted it in the new budget, and it's now 10-point something, and that makes more sense.
You're talking about positive budgeted expenses. Yeah, so there's a lot of confusion about this. People believe that if you budgeted a certain amount and you see more, X amount more than you budgeted in revenue, and the amount, you don't add those two numbers together. You have to take your actual results, revenue expenditures. What we don't have here is the page from the audited financials, I don't think, which shows the within-year of actual result. But I can show you.
Thank you.
I can point that out to you.
Thank you. But it's still, the question is, if you're updating your chart by $2 million, meaning the adopted budget on the website shows a bar graph in 2021, that's $2 million higher than the tentative budget that was shared with all of the residents at the public meeting. So that was never addressed, and I just wanted to understand how that went.
The 2021 year-end?
Yeah.
Because our audited results came out between the tentative budget and the adopted budget. So they would make adjustments to that. That number would change until, you know, I think probably we had projected, and then it was actual audited. But well, I'll check on that, because I believe they would be issued our financial statements.
I have them from February, and that number's higher from February.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. And I would also just urge everyone to, you know, please stick to the three minutes, but also everyone is welcome to come to us and come to our treasurer anytime they might add. And then also for the public, we have a public hearing on our adopted and tentative budgets in April. So people know for the future, when we're doing our budget season, April's the best time to come in, and this way you can put your comments on the record at our public hearing for the budget. But again, we're happy to take any questions or concerns. So is there an additional?
I do not have any more for this public hearing.
Lauren, did you want to go, did you want to come now for the public comment?
Or should I wait until tomorrow?
It's on the record specifically written to a rental registry or leaf blower hearing, but if it's about surfing, now's the right time to do it.
Okay.
Total change of gear from accounting, sorry. For those that didn't know, I'm Lauren in Ferrato, Village resident and absolutely lover of the ocean and everything surfing. As I brought up last time, there's a contingent of us that was a few dozen that now, as we get closer to surfing, seems to be growing and growing and growing, who I miscorrectly use the word surf schools. What we're really referring to is surf lessons. What is happening? I now understand that these surf schools, there are surf schools that we see, Operating Flying Point and others, kind of along the whole coast, there are people that are getting permits to be private lesson teachers. What they're doing is they're coming together in force, and they're each taking three to four kids. One stays in the parking lot to save spots, one is on TikTok and Instagram, one, I don't know, and one is in the ocean with the 12 kids. So actually, effectively, they're cheating the system of this village's kind of place. Furthermore, from my understanding, there's a law in place that private lessons should take place in the morning, like 8:00 to 11:00, or 8:30 to 11:30 or something like that. I would love to know the details of that law that was written in recent, fairly recently, because these surf schools, surf lessons are actually taking place from 7:00 to 7:00. Again, the biggest issues here really are, first of all, I'll take it back. I go to the beach every day. Many of us go to the beach every day. We're lucky to live in this place. Today on my run, there are a dozen surfers in there. It was gorgeous. It was that sense of freedom that we all love in the ocean. But surfing is freedom. These surf instructional groups are taking away that freedom from our village residents. The biggest risk to us as a village is liability. Someone is going to get hurt. I'm at the beach. Every day, it's like a joke. There's a bunch of us. I even have a cheap $100 Apple laptop I bought at Walmart so I can work at the beach, and it works there. Someone will get hurt, and it will be a liability that will vastly affect accounting and any circles we have if things go decently well. So we're just asking, first, I'd love to know what the rules are, because these teams, people are screwing the system. And two, you know, let's take into account the residents and the liability factor to the village in terms of environmental damage, parking, and serious injury.
Thank you very much. Lauren, I know you're okay. Are there any other speakers tonight for public comment? And if not, we can, we can keep on moving to the next portion of our meeting. So that being said, we'll move forward. So the next portion of our meeting is the Employee of the Month. And our Employee of the Month is Alex Wallach. He is our planning director, works out of the building department, and he's an individual that I nominated tonight. Alex came in from Suffolk County, where he worked in the planning department. He has a master's in architecture and is someone that we felt that we really needed to bring into the Village, because he can serve as liaison to builders, to applicants, to attorneys, and make sure that our applicants know exactly which boards to go to and help them better understand our code, which is quite complicated. And Alex came in, he hit the ground running. We have some residents in the Village who are very easy to deal with, and we have others not as much. But he has dealt with everybody in a very professional way. He has stepped up. He has got tons of positive compliments from members of our billing department, members of our land use boards, and our village attorneys. So we're very lucky to have him as part of our team, and we're happy that we created this position for him. And as the Village grew to a $33 million Village with plenty of real estate, we felt that it was a great opportunity to bring in someone like Alex, highly intelligent planner with the expertise. And so he's available for anyone to meet, to network with, and to get advice with if you go over to the billing department. And he's also available for those who can't come in via Zoom. So thank you very much and congratulations, Alex. Our next portion of the meeting is the Pavement Management Plan. And this is something that we'll maybe get into a little more in detail in our next work session. This is something that myself and the deputy mayor Gina Resta helped come up with. But as many people know, we really want to invest in our public works department, which we felt needed some more investment. The public works department cleans our beaches, they pave our roads, they take care of our parks. These are outstanding employees. I love them all, and they've done a great job. And one thing we wanted to do is to help empower our employees and our public works employees to really improve at what they are doing and really master their craft. And so what we're going to do is, we are working with the Cornell Asset Management Program to put into place a pavement management program. In the past, people would essentially drive around and look at our roads and to figure out which one should get paved and which one shouldn't. What we're going to do is, we're going to work with an intern over at Cornell to implement camp software. And this software will allow us to inventory our roads, use technology in order to determine which roads need paving and how to best maintain our roads. So I'll let the deputy mayor, who's the liaison to the public works department, talk a little more about this program.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, they call it the camp program, and just so you know, with camp comes from Cornell Asset Management Program. So Charlene and Gary and Paul interviewed interns that were very interested in this job, and we decided to hire Joseph Gates for the summer as an intern. And what he will be doing is, he'll be driving around and making log of all the streets, prioritizing what needs to be done on these streets. And it's not like, okay, this year, let's do this or let's do that. There's going to be a five-year plan to take care of the pavement and to, and perhaps if it's not just pavement, it could be repair alternatives, associate costs. This will be all done on a software system, which would be great. It's very clear and concise and all computerized. So he'll have a prioritized list of roads and what needs to be repaired. And it really helps the highway department to, with something like this, because they can plan ahead as to what they're doing with their schedule. So I think it's great, instead of doing, it's going to take a lot of guesswork out of what gets paved and repaired, and there's actually going to be a plan for that moving forward. So it's great, and I just love having interns working on this as well. So looking forward to implementing this.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Gina, maybe I'll give this to Charlene, just so she can put this on the, on the screen here. If you mind passing this down, we can just show that to the people attending and also just have that on the YouTube channel. And we could also make this available on the Village website, but this just little summary on the pavement management program. Kat, I don't know if you can zoom in here on the screen.
Can you put the name on there?
Okay.
All right. What can you do? It's all right, thanks. Okay. I think we'll get... I think we'll, we'll get the, we get the gist of, of the program, we'll, we'll put this in the village website, but thank you, thank you for trying. All right, we'll keep on moving here. We have a busy schedule of public hearings tonight. We've got three public hearings, and I just wanted to remind everybody that there's three minutes to participate. We are here, and we hope that everyone can be positive and, and civil. Everybody here is, is doing this job to try to help, and we're here to listen, and we're also here to, to take some comments. So, that being said, I'd like to make a motion to open our first public hearing tonight, which is a public hearing regarding local law six dash 2022, the proposal to amend the village code and to add a rental registry law. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I'll introduce what this is, and then we'll open this up to public comments, and then we'll take some comments from our board. So as many of you may be aware, given the public hearing we had in the prior month, New York State passed a law in 2019 that only allows for one month of rental income to be collected upfront. And what they did in 2019 in the Housing Intent Protection Act is that they didn't really think about a community like Southampton or a seasonal community where people collect the rent upfront Memorial Day through Labor Day. And so that put a lot of residents who rely on their homes as one of their primary sources of income at risk of not being able to collect their rent upfront. So Assemblyperson Fred Field and State Senator Kavanaugh prepared an amendment to that allowing the full collection of rent upfront. But what it required was certain things in place, including the creation of a rental registry. So there's a few things I wanted to reiterate before we take some comments from the public. The first thing is that we wanted to craft something that was a safe haven, as my favorite real estate attorney, John Bennett, said, for the village resident. And this is simply a service, and the most important thing for people to know is that this rental registry is optional. You do not have to participate if you don't want to. So this contrasts very sharply with the town of Southampton and the town of East Hampton, which have a more heavy-handed rental permit program. This is not a rental permit program, this is simply a registry that anyone at their option could choose to participate in. And so if you don't want to participate in it, there is no obligation to do so. And on top of that, we listened to everyone's comments at the last meeting, and other renters and the real estate community expressed some concern that people's financial information would be on that lease that the New York State law makes you submit as part of that rental registry program. Again, if you optionally want to participate. So we got some advice both from our village council and from outside council in the real estate sector. And they actually said that you can redact the financial information for the privacy of the resident. So this new law that we have, again, is optional, it's less than three pages, and you simply need to go into the billing department, give the bare minimum information to participate. You can redact your financial information, and you can be in this safe haven against the New York State law that we thought was maybe a little heavy-handed and unfair towards seasonal communities like Southampton. So I hope that helps summarize this. And with that said, I will open this up to public comment and then take some comments from the board, if that's okay. Okay. Anyone who'd like to?
Francis Genevieve.
Okay. Let's open this up, we'll start with the back first, if that's okay. Feel free to come on up, and then we'll move to the other side of the room. There's a, a woman behind you, and then, and then you're good to go next. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for your work here and for focusing on this issue. With this legislation, as you just said, Mayor, you're giving the homeowners and the tenants an option as to how to structure payments. It's an important issue, and it affects all of us. I will, for disclosure, I'm an attorney for 40 years. I grew up in East Hampton, I served on the town board in East Hampton. I am very familiar with legislation, with how difficult it is to get through, with how difficult it is to stay on top of things, and with how important the real estate industry is to the East End. This legislation that was enacted in 2019 had a really chilling effect on the whole rental market because of the issue of the payment structure, which only allowed one month payment at a time. That has its own repercussions, which is you get a tenant in there who fails to pay, and all of a sudden you have a tenant for three months, and you can't get them out, and you can't get your money because the whole issue of eviction takes so long. So this is a really important piece of legislation, and I really applaud you for taking it on. I also want to say I've read all, I read the 2019 law, and I've read all of the local laws that are exemption, that opt for this exemption. And I think yours is by far the fairest I've, I've seen of all of them. So again, I just want to say thank you for the legislation. Thank you for giving both tenants and landlords an option.
Thank you very much.
Ms. Quigley, Ms. Quigley, could you please state your name?
Sorry. Hello, Charlene. We worked together years ago. My name is Teresa Quigley, and I am in-house attorney currently for Saunders and Associates, and.
Thank you. Mr. Miller?
You just said that I was.
Okay, all right. All right, Ms. Genevieve, floor is all yours.
My name is Francis Genevieve, I live at 209 Bishop's Lane. I think there are some things that you pared down this law to its barest, barest minimum. It still has a potential to be overreaching and onerous. You can add to it at any time, and I absolutely know you will. Okay, so here, what you've ignored in stating the history of this law is the inordinate amount of power it gives to tenants, that was its purpose, that was New York State's purpose. So you've transferred by, by registration, you've transferred power to the tenant over the landlord here. Okay, to, to say it's simply a service is disingenuous. It's overreaching, and it puts a legal onus on the landlord. Why, for instance, are there affidavits still mentioned in it? Why is the building department the entity to administer this? Why isn't it just like a beach permit? What, why is the building department involved in it? And as for the eviction issue, most of what you have in this law is covered by a lease. Any standard lease gives the permanent address of the tenant. It also states clearly, it's a contract, states clearly the time that the rental will cover, which includes the date to leave. This provides no protection against any tenant in any situation that decides to stay. This, it has, that process has to go through the same thing as it goes through now. The registration is nothing in this law or in any standard lease that can guarantee you that you can go in and get a person out on the day they're supposed to get out. So this doesn't accomplish that. Anyway, the legal address of the owner, that's part of an ordinary lease. The number of tenants that are allowed to stay, that's also stipulated in an ordinary lease. So the purpose of this law at this point in time, what you've done is you've tried to make, to rest, to make restitution to the landlord to get their full payment in advance, the way it was before Fred Field let this go through. So you're trying to get that, and you're ignoring totally the potential dangers in this law, the onerous kind of legalities that it brings. That's what this law is doing, I'm against it, and I also want to register once again how the rollout of this law, which was initially 19 pages long, was completely without merit. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Nancy again. So what I started to say, Nancy again. I'm changing it a little bit, having heard what I heard. But I guess basically what it gets down to is, I was not happy with the original law that was in Albany, but it was absolutely outrageous that we could have a lawyer in Sag Harbor agree to that, when in fact we're a community that many, many, many people rent their houses. And then, of course, they backtrack and tried to fix it, adding that you would have to have a rental permit in order to rent your house, collect your money upfront. I don't know what's planned for the future with this rental permit. I know with the town, you sign up, it's good for two years. Basically, you sign up and then you fill in the information when you get a tenant. I'm not sure how you're going to do it. I do know that in the town, they actually send out the building permit, the building department, a member of the building department inspector, to make sure that the house meets code. That, I have, I have concerns over that, not that a house should not meet code, but I think that there are codes change. And I think that there are a lot of people here who rent their house because they have to rent their house. More to stay, pay their taxes to pay certain things that upkeep on their house. And I have concerns because I do know of people in the town who, when the inspectors came over to their house, they found things like plus thousands of dollars. And silly things like moving an electrical box five inches, which costs thousands and thousands of dollars. So I have concerns for the local person who doesn't have a lot of money, has to rent their house if this law goes through. Also, I guess that's really what I was mostly saying, thinking about. Oh, I know, I also wanted to mention, if, if in fact you're not having people from the building department go out and check, I'm concerned about liabilities to the village because you have a permit system in place. Really basically have, I'm assuming you're having the homeowner fill out a questionnaire, are you? How's it working?
I can answer everything. Maybe I'll do it at the end.
Okay, so, I mean, if in fact answering questionnaire, still, if there's something wrong there, and we live in such a litigious, litigious society, I'm concerned not only about the property owner, most concerned about the village because they didn't do their job in checking to make sure that, yeah. My point.
Mr. Mayor, can I jump in and respond to that, one of those comments?
Go ahead.
There has been litigation in case law on the issuance of a simple permit for rental, requiring an onsite inspection of the property by the building inspector, where the courts in New York State have ruled that that is an unwarranted invasion of privacy. And we can't require or demand access to the property simply because they're asking for a simple permit, whether it be a barbecue permit or a rental permit. So in the alternative, what we're doing is requesting the applicant, the homeowner, to certify that they are in compliance with all, you know, federal, state, local, and village ordinances. So the liability issue falls on the property owner, not the village.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you, Ken.
Are there any additional comments from the public? Tina, I don't want to put you in the spot, no need to come up if you don't want to. Okay, thank you. Are there any comments from the board?
Yeah, Tim, I have a few questions for you. Do you foresee, well, thank you for coming, I know you like to work, so thank you for spending a couple hours with us. Do you foresee, do you foresee any, any additional staff needed to implement this? I know, I know you've been working very hard to try to stream on this, but do you, do you foresee any, any staff needed to assist the, your current staff with this?
No, I've been very appreciative that the trustee has understood my situation.
And as I said, you know, because I do have some concerns. As I share with you, I did do some data, data collection this past winter, and I discovered that the village has almost nearly 1,000 open permits, building permits dating back to the year 2000. So I, I know you're, I'm willing to share the information with you, Tim, and I will. I, I'm just very concerned that this process will further backlog the, your, your staff and cause confusion because, because it is our fault, and I don't see, we haven't decided on a dollar amount for the permit fee. So that's another question I have, what the fee will be. So there's a lot of, for me, still up in any questions, but I understand people want the money upfront. But there's still a lot of questions in my, in my, in my view, I think we should be tabling this until we figure out collectively, as a community, how to move forward. So sorry to interrupt you, Tim, I just wanted to say my piece. And how do you foresee the enforcement going on with this?
With the rental registry?
With, 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 with registry. Because if we're going to have people register, how do you perceive people, if people use C-click Fix? I mean, as, as I said, we can't have people knocking down doors to go on their property. So how do you want to regulate this, through Angel or how do you perceive?
Well, with C-click Fix, it's, it's a joint effort. Angel does talk regularly, address the issues that come up on C-click. I can't be everywhere at once. We certainly do our best to try to follow up, do what we can to address any concerns that come through on C-click.
Because again, I think there is still some opening questions, and I think, you know, we're now, you know, almost the end of May, and, you know, people have already signed leases, and this, this may cause some unnecessary confusion by passing this law now. We should actually have been working on this six months ago, but unfortunately, it's time is of the essence. So I understand the frustration here, but I think we need to take a step back. But that's my perspective, and I'm sticking to it.
Teresa?
Thank you, trustee, maybe I'll just defer this to Ken.
Ken first.
Yeah, if that's okay. You could, you're welcome to come in up, though we, we are limiting everything to three minutes. If that's okay with you, I might just go to Ken Gray to get his legal input. So Ken, Ken, there was the question that came up from Trustee McLaughlin about, will this strain our enforcement or anything like that? I mean, I, you can explain.
The answer is no, because it's, it's, it's a voluntary thing. And the, the rental registry that you're putting in place is not a benefit necessarily to the village. We see no gain on it at all. It's simply an avenue for village residents who own property that rent them to be in compliance with the New York State general obligations law. It, it's, we're simply giving them a, an avenue to be in compliance. We're not citing anybody, we're, we, the village, based on the law, are not filing any complaints about anybody. But if a village resident wants to rent their property for up to 120 days, this gives them an avenue to be in compliance with a New York State law, not a village law. So if people don't want to be in compliance with the New York State law and they don't register, we don't have jurisdiction to issue anything, the state does. So that's where we're at, that, that's the purpose of this law.
Thank you, Ken. We're, we're going to limit, just because we have to get to the next public hearing, the three minutes per speaker. So thank you. Are there any other comments from the board?
Good, I think everything's been said.
Okay, thank you, Trust Resta. The only thing I would also add is, again, Tim, you've done a great job. Trustee McLaughlin, you're right, there are plenty of open building permits. But Tim has been the senior building inspector for less than a year. So some of those open building permits from 10 years ago wasn't exactly his doing, but we are getting to them. And that's definitely a concern that we do have, and we're happy to have. And um, we're happy to have increased our building department staff. Uh, we've hired uh, new, new individuals, uh, two new building inspectors, uh, a new associate who's outstanding, uh, who joined us. And we have Derek Highsmith as well, who's uh, been very solid for us. So um, just wanted to thank again our building department. So uh, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'd like the public hearing to remain.
All right, we'll keep on moving here. Uh, we, we have a second public hearing tonight, uh, and that is the public hearing regarding, thank you, Tim. The local law five dash 2022, the proposal to amend Village Code, Chapter 73, landscapers and Chapter 78 nuisances. Is there a mo, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll open this up. Uh, there's actually not as many people here as I expected, but, but this certainly was a contentious issue. And so there's a few things uh, I'd like to add. And then, Krishan, are you planning on saying anything or, okay. So Krishan was the, was the chair of the task force that we put together, uh, to help bring together the landscaping community and the environmental community. Many of the things, as Krishan will say, uh, that this task force um, came up with are implemented. And there are other things that were uh, put into this um, code that uh, that, that were not. Um, so I'll let Krishan, uh, maybe one item actually, so I'll let Krishan explain that. Uh, but again, there's a couple of tiers and I'll let Krishan actually explain this. But number one, uh, we were asked to uh, remove the electrics from this. Uh, number two, uh, we were asked to increase enforcement by the landscaping community, uh, something that we're very happy to do. And if you'll allow me, Krishan, to go ahead and talk about some of the enforcement options before I turn this over to you, if that's okay. Or do you think you should go first? Okay, so in order to increase the enforcement, we just want to let the landscaping community know that we did some research, uh, thanks to our village administrator and directing chief Herto, as far as how we can step up our enforcement. And actually, we determined that there are uh, classes offered for code enforcement training for part-time code enforcement officers. That can be taken to be a New York State, the village, uh, it's a nominal fee, the village will cover that fee. And we can get both individuals trained, TCOs trained, members of our village hall staff trained, to become part-time code enforcement officers. And as soon as they complete the chapter, whether it's on building, whether it's on ordinance, whether it's on noise, they can go take the, uh, that portion of that exam and the second they pass, they can be appointed as a part-time code enforcement officer. And we're very lucky to have George Brown, for example, one of our TCOs. Uh, you may know him because he works at the, during the summer at the front of village hall. He has already stepped up and uh, is decided to take that exam. Uh, we have other TCOs who have expressed interest. Uh, and we have other members of village hall who've expressed interest. And again, as soon as they pass that portion of that exam, they can be immediately added to our uh, part-time code enforcement list. So uh, we'll have uh, much more code enforcement officers uh, this summer and also this fall. Uh, and, and in future years than we've had before. So that's one portion, and then also we're gonna work with as many nonprofit organizations we can and the landscaping community uh, on, on various education outreach. And again, uh, we had one landscaper actually reached out to us who said that he wanted to become a code enforcement officer. And uh, in fact, we have reached out to him and, and we're hoping that he'll actually sign up, uh, as he wanted to help self-enforce. So that's a little bit of an outline, Krishan could do a better job as the chair of this task force we put together. So my apologies for the delay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and uh, just to go through some of the details that we did. As a reminder, the gas leaf blowers were banned during the summer in the village in 2019. And then the town in, uh, two, in uh, 2022 this year. Licensed landscapers in the village have been working with electric leaf blower for three summers now. Uh, task force has met three times for an hour and a half each. And uh, we all listened to a long first public hearing that was held in this room. Certainly strong and passionate feedback that came from all sides that we all listened to carefully. Just want to point out that legislation in California is banning the sale of gas leaf blower in 2024. And that New York State has legislation on the floor in Albany to propose a ban, the sale of gas leaf blower in 2027. So from the task force uh, in, in public hearings, what we heard first from the professional in landscaping industry were four main issues. Labor, competition, supply chain, and equipment performance. First on labor, the issue of obtaining visas through a lottery for seasonal work has been very difficult. On the compete, uh, competition, unlicensed contractors operating in a village are undercutting price. On the supply chain, there are challenges in getting electrical equipment. And finally, on equipment performance, um, in their mind, the electric do not perform as well as gas. And batteries need to be charged. From the resident's perspective, what we heard is that this is a major quality of life issue. Pollution from noise is incessant, carbon emission, and health hazards. So the conclusion uh, that we came up was that we needed a REEL plan. REEL, that's regulation, education, enforcement, and licensing. So I'll start with the last on the license. Worse, the elimination of uh, Southampton Village landscaping registration requirement. That's by amending 73 dash two and having reciprocity with the town's licensing requirement. Basically reducing unnecessary government bureaucracy at the village level and using the town licensing mechanism. Number two, in terms of enforcement, uh, mayor just spoke about this and advocate, we did advocate and obviously was listened to very dedicated part-time code enforcement, trained TCO, and SVPD crew. In terms of education, um, should this, uh, should a resolution adopt this local law five? We already have a leaflet which is ready to be mailed to residents explaining the new rule and providing recommendations. Now, on the regulation side, uh, 78 dash four, um, the idea is to move from a summer prohibition to a spring and fall cleanup authorization. In other words, gas leaf blowers can be used for spring cleaning, which runs from March 15th to May 15th, two months. And a fall cleanup from October 15th to the end of the year, that's two and a half months. The key issue, uh, well, I'll get to that in a minute. Basically, um, on the difference between what you saw in the first public hearing and this document that you have before you, is one, that we narrowed the scope to landscapers, leaving homeowners guided by the noise ordinance. That's uh, Chapter 77, your village code. And two, we took out the restricted use of leaf blowers after listening to everybody's input. There is one issue that the task force couldn't agree on, and just on one point. And therefore, the task force made to this board two recommendations. One, either have another task force reconvene in 2024 to assess the technological progress. Or two, simply ban gas leaf blower on October 2024. The latter was chosen to allow the industry to prepare itself for what we know will be rate demand and challenges to get access to these electric leaf blowers as gas leaf blower sale will be banned around the country. Now, that's five years from now of the initial summer ban in the village, as I said, early in 2019 to 2024. So the key issue really uh, for this public hearing is likely to be the determination and its proper enforcement. Understand, there's not a lot of landscaping community here today, but I certainly had another one or a good friend of mine in the industry around my kitchen table this morning. We went through this yet again, and uh, those key issues in his mind was enforcement. The community and the landscaping community just don't believe that we will be successful in enforcement. Um, and I think it's up to the board to convince village residents and landscaping community that they will be strong enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any comments from the public?
Can two people sign up, Mr. Mayor, Mackey Fenderdy?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Matt.
Mayor, there's also a hand here.
Thank you.
I'm Mackey Fenderdy, Wally Street Village. Congratulations on reaching a compromise on this important and controversial environmental issue. So interesting tonight how few people are here in comparison to their outdoor on the last one. Um, so this shows leadership in this area that I believe no one else in New York State has a ban. Um, and even though it's not as soon as we would have liked, um, it, it does seem to be a fair compromise. There are a few things I wanted to say, uh, in the interest of consistency and clarity in the law. I'm looking, it's not paginated, but I'm at um, Section 2 Amendment 78.4, capital B, a small a. Um, it talks about construction work. And it said it applies to, uh, it's work that's performed by one or more employees or independent contractors. In the next paragraph, uh, B, it says that no person, and that is repeated again under two for property maintenance, one or more employees or independent contractors for compensation, et cetera. Um, and, and then again, B says no person. So I, I'm not clear what that means. The one sounds like it only applies to contractors. And the second paragraph seems like it's saying no person, which is what it should be. It should be consistent, first of all, it's really important in the law. And um, we, I think we all agree that it has to apply to everybody, not just landscapers. So the few people left in the village who still cut their own lawn and load their own leaves, um, have to be required to obey this law as well. Otherwise, it makes absolutely no sense that a contractor who's working for a living is under one law and someone who just feels like cutting their own lawn is under another law. So I would like you to look at that and perhaps I'm misunderstanding it, I just would like it to be consistent. The other area of inconsistency that I was surprised, you know, was um, on the following page under B. At the top, this would be like the fourth page, I guess. Uh, it talks about, the last line in the first paragraph. Municipal employees may engage in property maintenance and landscaping, et cetera. Start nowhere all you then 6:00 AM. Then in the next paragraph, down in the next section, it says that municipal employees are bound by the same hours as other people are. So I was surprised, I, I couldn't figure out, can municipal employees start at 6:00 AM? Or are they bound by the eight and nine rules? So again, I would just like to have that be consistent. And maybe, maybe you or Mr. Gray or Krishan can explain that to me. Um, also, it's sometimes it applies, it talks about municipal employees and other times it talks about village employees. I don't know if they're the same people or different people. So that, that's all on that same page. I would just like you to look at that. And, and one that, the only one that actually had problem with, um, is down in on that same page where you're talking about no more than two leaf blowers on your backpack. Uh, on, on half a acre property. Uh, now, some people at the last meeting were complaining just privately that people come in the village where those small lots are just hordes of people come onto the lots. You know, they unload all these people and you can't even use your property, I mean, it's so loud. I think that probably most properties taken in the village as a whole probably are over a half acre. And that would mean a lot of leaf blowers, there's no concern for you to put 10 leaf blowers on, could you? I don't know what the intent is there. Um, but since this is all about noise and the noise of leaf blowers, I, I would just like some thought about what that actually meant and what your intent was there. And whether that could be clarified or even cut down a bit. Because if you just go a little over a half acre, then can you, 10 leaf blowers? I, I don't know what, uh, perhaps you can help me out on that. And I think. Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mackey. That was a, that was a great catch about the 6:00 AM versus the 8:00 AM, uh, as well as the question about the, uh, the number of leaf blowers. So I'll just ask Ken, Ken Graham, we also have Krishan who helped, who helped draft the legislation that could also answer that. So maybe I'll start with Ken. Uh, again, if you can clarify, uh, uh, Section 3, uh, A, and then about, and then says at 8:00 AM for, uh, for, for, in general, and then there's a, prior to that, it says municipal at 6:00 AM. So maybe you can just help us clarify that.
I believe the issue concerning um, the timeframe in which village employees can operate really have to do with their work hours. So um, if, if they're not, if, if they're starting their workday at 6:00 AM and they can't work and they can't operate until 8:00 AM, um, we have them, we're paying them for two hours sitting around doing nothing. So I, that I believe is what the issue there was. Krishan, are you there or?
Yes, I am, and I can answer that question.
Please.
The work that's done by municipal employees, Jones Lane, um, and Main Street in our central downtown starts at 6:00 AM. It is generally completed by eight, by 8:00 AM. Uh, so it's important to leave them that opportunity because they are in the central district. Um, the noise outcome of that is, is, is manageable. As to the writing of this, um, what is involved is only what's been changed. So this is already on your books, 78 dash four. If you start with Section 3, the idea here is to address this indeed for municipal workers and independent contractors whereby village residents are guided, as I said earlier, by the noise ordinance 77, which does address gas leaf blowers itself, um, in limitation to 65 degrees. I hope that helps that question.
Can you tell us what that says, is it consistent?
77? That's in your code, yeah. Uh, we, um, I assume, uh, can you have a computer where you can just relate 77? We all had a conference call on that very topic, 77 noise.
Uh, I, I don't have it in front of me, to tell you the truth. Um, there, there's an issue concerning um, noise, but excludes residential issues. Correct?
Well, I'll be more specific. If you want to look, it's gonna be 77.
I know.
It's inside 77, if you can look at the village code. The noise ordinance, in paragraph three.
Oh, it, it, it exempts, it exempts, um, homeowners from that noise issue. I'm gonna try to pull it up. I know we talked about this.
Does that have to do about the decimal level, is that what we're referring to?
The current law that limits the decimal level at the border of your property. And the problem is that law's never really been enforced. And a lot of people say that the, even the code enforcement says they go up to the place, the guy shut off their machine. They say, we're not doing anything and nothing ever happens. Uh, but we already have a law that limits the decimal level at the border of the property if we would actually enforce it, which is part of the thing that you said, Krishan, about the need for better enforcement.
As Ken is reading the document, um, that specific law you're referring to, trustee Sevenson, also addresses specifically gas leaf blowers in those exceptions during the summer, so it's already coded.
Right, so it's, it's, it's Village Code, Section 77 dash four, exceptions. And it talks about um, the use between 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM of homeowners light residential, outdoor equipment or commercial service equipment. or commercial service equipment. So this has to do with the individual homeowner who doesn't hire an outside company to come in and take care of their property, that they're able to take care of their own property, relieving them of the financial burden.
But are they still subject to the noise limit?
Yes.
Yes.
In this law.
In a, in a, I'll let Christian take this, but it's a different chapter.
No, it's a different chapter. It's Chapter 77, which is already coded and been in application for a long time. What we're dealing with here in essence is 78-4, which deals with leaf blowers more particularly for landscapers and municipal workers.
Homeowner. Do what they want.
The homeowner has freedom within 77 to use gas leaf blowers certain times and is, is guided by 77, which has already been there for a long time. That's the topic I raised as being the main issue at hand here is going to be the determination of this administration to have enforcement. And that includes comments from landscapers. So I had this conversation again this morning about we don't have decibel meters. None of us, none, nobody in your business. So what they're not, $100, get one or two and that'll be easy to measure.
Christian, again, if you're, if you're interested, we are offering that program. It begins in June for the training for code enforcement. I was told you have some free time on Saturdays and Sundays.
Mayor, we do have one more question. Garrett Goodwin.
Garrett Goodwin. Opposition. You know, I've been working, I've been living out here all my life. Been working 97 myself. And, you know, sitting here and I get it, boys, I listen to it all day long. I don't want to hear it. But if I'm getting paid, I have to do it. You know, I get the quiet part. I don't mind doing it during the summer because, you know what? It's not that much, not that much to breathe, it's not that much material. But to phase it out by 24 is not realistic. You know, the equipment is not there yet. The theme ion is not there in our field. Power is not there. Art. I get 20 minutes out of a battery. I have had to spend thousands of dollars now that the town has come down on this too. I've had to gener- I have had to put a generator on the trailer to electrify all these batteries they run. Now this generator's going to be running eight hours a day to charge these batteries. So if this does get washed out in 27, why are we doing it in 24? And that's, I don't understand that. You know, this is proposed budget. This is something proposed in New York State on 27 that they're going to phase them out. That's with a Democratic agenda right now. But who says it might change over to a Republican agenda and it might just totally get washed wet? So you're putting the cart before the horse. And you're causing me financially tremendous. And it's not fair. I've been living out here all my life. There is a huge target on our backs. Everything is evil with us. Everybody comes around, you're so loud, you're so this. No. I try to do it. I try to be as quiet as possible. I don't want to listen to it all day long, and I have to. I enjoy what I do. But every time, there's another restriction, 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 restriction. This is one of the most overregulated areas in New York State, from DC to everything. We deal with a lot of regulations. And now we have local ones that are coming at us. And they're constantly restricting and restricting. I'm a small guy. I'm not one of these big guys. I don't have the luxury of, oh, let me just get some visa workers from foreign countries to come in. I don't. So you're really pinching somebody that does little jobs, enjoys what they do. And to have this hearing in the middle of May, when it is our peak season, is quite disrespectful. It really is. Because this is, this is go time for me. You know, and you have, you don't have any respect, it's constantly a target. And what's next? Is it the hedge clippers? Is it the weed whacker? Is it eventually the lawnmower? This law is sitting there waiting to adopt something else to restrict. I was fine from May to September. Was fine with it. Didn't have a problem with it. But now we're going to try to restrict this here almost quite a bit. This is, you know, it's disheartening, you know? You're putting a real pinch on me and to the small people.
Thank you very much.
Yes, I can't hear someone.
Whenever you.
Hi, you're in.
Is that me?
Yeah.
Okay. My name is Penelope Wright, and I have to say, I would have been there in person, but I had a COVID exposure, so I'm home. And just, I'll be very brief. I wanted to echo Mackie's congratulations to this board for even putting forth a proposal to ban gas-powered leaf blowers. I, after the hearings that we've been to, I have to say, I was just really surprised that the implementation date wasn't, wasn't moved forward. I know that there's a lot of unhappiness about this happening at all from landscapers, but it does seem like something that, that had to happen. I, I don't know if it's too late for you to reconsider, but to me, it does see, I mean, we're not just talking about quality of life, we're talking about an environmental issue that's really important. And I wish that you would reconsider that date and push it up until a year from now, if that's possible. And, but I thank you for considering it. Okay, that's it.
Thank you very much, Penelope. Ken, I believe there might be one more person. All right. What is your name? Ken, you might also say address as well. We know Sheila.
Hello?
How are you, Sheila?
Oh, thank you. Hi, Jesse. This is Sheila Piper, 56 Hildreth Street. And I am happy to be able to say that I'm grateful for Christian's summary of what happened and of what has gone on. I agree with what Penny just said, that as you know, my husband Steve and I have both testified in previous hearings, and we would really prefer to see a ban on gas leaf blowers for all the reasons that are stated in the law itself about its bad effects. We would like to see it sooner. But we do recognize that sometimes compromise is necessary. However, I think Mackie and her going through the law brought up a good point. I do not understand if, I don't know if it's actually true, but it seems to me very contrary to allow individuals to continue to use gas leaf blowers in the times when they are restricted for the professionals, for the, for the landscapers. I think that's, that's really a problem. And also that the time that they can use it is greater than the time that landscapers can use it. I heard it quoted from the noise ordinance code that they, individuals can use that equipment from 7:00 to 7:00. But in, for landscapers and professionals, they can only use it from 8:00 to 6:00. So I think there's a discrepancy there that should be addressed. It should be equal, and I think it should be the 8:00 to 6:00 time. And I think that all people should be restricted from using the gas blowers at the times that are in the law. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sheila. Is there any additional public comment? Okay, with that being said, I'd like to open this to.
I would like to ask, Christian, I do, I do have a few questions for you, if you wouldn't mind. Thank you. First of all, thank you for your work. I know it was a, a long road, few months for you to do this, so thank you. And to all those who participated, thank you. I do want to say, I know in the, in the initial draft of the law, there was a, a proposed ban on electric or just limiting electric to the, to the, to the seasons. I'm curious to know, since we all love electric, as why that was even considered? Because I know, because, you know, we are, there were several people who initially said to me, you know, I, I can't, you go ahead, my task book, I, I have trees around it. So those residents who have, who had frustrations, I'm curious to know as to where the initial legislation came from when it came to wanting to ban electric during the summer season.
So in the research that was done, we looked at different legislations in a tri-state area. The highest common denominator is Larchmont. And the lowest common denominator probably as of a year ago was the town of South Hampton. And there was an attempt to get closer to a Larchmont model, which clearly, listening to the landscaper community, which are very important people who service this community residents. It was, we felt better to have a, and after very good public hearing comments, first time around, better to have the current draft that you have on. So I hope that helps answer your question.
Again, I, I'm curious to know as to where the ban of electric even came into play because, you know, we, we all, the whole purpose of this was for the environment, for the, for the environment to not have gas and to, to, for the quality of life of residents. But I'm curious as to know where the ban of electric was, even came into play after 24. Is there, is there science behind that or what was the?
Sorry, currently in what is before you, before dawn this evening, to not have anything related to that, so.
But the, but the original draft, I was curious as to the background of that.
I just answered you. It was the Larchmont, some of the Larchmont business model, which was after good listening of public hearing taken down.
I also just want to say that for those landscapers out there, you know, I, my family, we have our property cleaned twice a year, spring and fall. And I insisted this past year for my, for our landscaping to use electric. So, and he was one that had to be obliged. And he used our outdoor plugs to power his electric, so when needed. So I would encourage residents to allow their landscapers to plug in if necessary.
That's a, that's a, trustee McLaughlin, that's a very good point. And I also want to quickly answer Sheila Piper on the issue of 7:00 AM for 7:00 PM for village residents. A lot of them have jobs, they work, and they can't do their work until they get home for their wants. So that's a very modest exception for the people who are working in this community and live here year-round, which we thought was appropriate for those very few people, unfortunately very few. But they do exist, or the issue, we need to respect their work, 95.
Thank you for your time, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Christian. Are there any other comments from the board? All right, Mr. White. Again, just a friendly reminder, you can state your name and address and then.
Michael White, 276 North Main Street. I wasn't here for this. I'm here for, I wanted to, at the end, I have an issue, a public issue. But, you know, I just watched you guys do a public forum on the rental law. Now you're doing one on leaf blowers. Now, why is it the government's job to restrict people? I mean, you have like a handful of the same people here. Most of this village could care less if it's a leaf blower. I don't know how you're going to enforce it because the village has had problems before enforcing noise ordinance because they don't have, they don't have the right equipment. They don't have calibrated equipment. They don't have people that are certified to read a decimal meter. So this has been a problem before with nightclubs. You're certainly not going to do it with leaf blowers. And like this gentleman, you know, you want him to get a generator, okay? Like, everybody thinks there's such thing as clean energy. There's no such thing because he's going to run a generator now. I mean, you have an electric car, where do you think the electric's coming from? Like, it's just, it takes energy to make energy. So he's going to run a generator now that's probably loud as his leaf blowers and probably as polluting as it. And what are you, what are you accomplishing? Like, what are you accomplishing with a rental law? Nobody asked you to do that. Nobody asked you except a couple people in this village to do leaf blowers. If you took a, I don't know, some kind of survey, I bet you 90% of people wouldn't even answer it in this village because they could care less. And when you, if you're a landscaper and you tell the average person that your cleanup, instead of 200, it's going to be 600 because they're going to do it by hand, people would be like, get the leaf blower out. And if I was so bothered by a leaf blower, I would tell him, don't bring the leaf blower. I'll pay you extra for not using a gas-powered leaf blower. So if it's such a problem, people can opt out and say, I don't want a leaf blower. And I just think government now is making solutions for problems that aren't existing, especially in this village, you know? And that's, you know, at the end of this meeting, I have a really good one that's going on and nobody's paying attention to it. And I think you guys should really focus on real issues. And I don't think a leaf blower, of all things, is a problem. And thank you.
Thank you. Christine.
I just have to say that, Christine, I just have to say that the noise, that having laws doesn't really do anything. I mean, I don't know anything about leaf blowers, just in general, there's a lot of noise that happens that no one's aware of and that it's on the village resident to have to, you know, go through calling police and filing court and all of that. It seems to me there should be hours during which certain things shouldn't occur, night, day. Because this, a lot of places is no sleep. And I think that the leaf blowers, I don't know, it just seems, everybody has a point. However, I disagree with gentlemen that people in this village don't care because they certainly do.
Thank you, Christine. There, any other comments from the? There, any other comments from the public? Additional comments from board members?
Okay, thank you.
The only thing I would add here is that, a few things. I thought we had a productive first public hearing which led to this. Wanted to thank Christian and all the members of the leaf blower task force for their time and energy in this. It was a grueling process. The task force made a lot of progress, obviously with the one exception of the effective date of October first, twenty twenty-four. And it's a very difficult topic here because you have members of our community who care about quality of life, who care about the environment, who make valid points, and as Christine said, we have landscaping community who also makes valid points. And to the gentleman who mentioned about, you know, how tough it's gonna be to just run a business where there's already, it's already so hard between inflationary pressures, the rising cost of labor, additional governmental restrictions from the DEC that are already tough to comply with, it's a very tough situation. And I think I could speak for the entire board and anyone who's ever served in public office, which is most people sign up for this job to try to, to try to help people and to try to come up with solutions for residents. Unfortunately, this is a situation, unlike the rental law where, you know, even the real estate community came out and supported it, this is a situation where not every person is going to, is going to like it. And we hope that we had come up with a good compromise so that both parties could walk away from something giving a little bit. But I, but all I can say is that I totally feel your pain, I also have a small business and it's a, it's a pain. Every single time there's more regulation from government, it's not good for business. And, and so I actually fully feel for you. So the hope is that this legislation, while not perfect, you know, comes up with a good solution that at least tackles some of the problems that we have out there. The other thing I'll add, and I think Christian may, had mentioned this to me earlier today, is that this is, this is a local law. All it takes to amend the local law is to have a public hearing and to get, you know, the majority of our board of trustees to vote for it. So for example, if in October first, two thousand twenty-four, there's been no change in any technology and landscapers really can't do their job, there is an opportunity to amend it, but we hope that's not the case. We hope that there's ample technology out there. But at least there's a solid, you know, two plus years to come into compliance. We also understand that right now there's a supply chain crisis going on nationwide and right now it would actually be impossible to get proper working equipment. So we fully acknowledge that as well, which is why there was a later date. So again, to those who enjoy this law, I think it's a good step forward in the right direction, we're happy that we're able to help. And to those who are, you know, not satisfactory with this, not a satisfaction, we're still here, we're not going anywhere, we're here to listen and we're, we want to hear how things are going. So-
Mr. Mayor, I just want to add one thing. I also would welcome anyone who wants to look at the emails, emails that we all receive from residents over the last two, at least over the last of my tenure, of residents constantly bringing their concerns to us about the noise and about the lack of coil they are experiencing when you have several landscapers on the block using gas. So yes, we understand it's gonna be an adjustment period, but again, those emails, I'll share them with anyone who wants to see them, that they're, again, people all over the village, from Herrick Road to, to Policy Street, were certainly having issues. So they're there for the public to see if they want to afford them because they're there. So I just want to add that we do receive many complaints from the public.
Thank you. I'll also add this was a very strange issue because I did mention about the construct of the New York State Legislature, about a democratic-run legislature, but the irony is that we have many Republicans that also email us and say they don't like the sound of leaf blowers. So it's, as far as the dislike of noise, it's certainly a bipartisan issue and also probably bipartisan the fact that people-
It's something why you're not dealing with, stay in the New York State. Why don't you stay in the New York State? They're gonna try to ban it in twenty-seven, why don't you ban it in twenty-seven? Why are you gonna be in front of them? I don't understand that.
Because every day we get emails from hundreds of people saying-
But, but the question is, is you're gonna ban leaf blowers? And then the next thing is, is it's going to be the hedge clippers, it's going to be the weed whacker, it's going to be the lawnmower. It is an open-ended law here and you're going to put the screws to me.
We've been debating this, not just, this isn't the first meeting that there's been, it's been going on for years. The ban was even first discussed two or three years ago.
I've gotta live my life, I don't want to be here. I should have faith in government, but there is no faith in government.
Well, how about the hundreds of people who want the ban?
What about, don't put the cart before the horse. Technology's not there in our industry yet.
As the mayor just said, if the technology's not there in two years, the law can be amended, but we have to listen to our constituents and I would-
And it's not environmentally friendly. It's not because I have to run a generator. That's running, that's running petroleum. Those batteries are not cheap and they come from halfway around the world and they're unrecycled.
Thank you.
So I mean, the carbon footprint's the same. It's the same, if not worse with the electric.
We'll keep on moving on here. I'm always available by the way, so feel free to reach out at any point and we do appreciate your comments and it's definitely an important part of the discussion. So thank you. If there's no further public comment or comments from the board, we'll, we'll keep on moving here. And I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. This is the third public hearing tonight. That will be the public hearing regarding local law eight dash two thousand twenty-two, the proposal to amend village code by adding chapter one-ten dash forty-six, electric vehicle parking of chapter one-ten vehicles and traffic. I'll make the motion to open the public hearing, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So actually thanks to our deputy mayor, who is the liaison with the Public Works Department, she worked with Highway and Public Works Superintendent Gary Gilleski on installing electric charging stations throughout the village. Many people can see them right behind Village Hall, right by the train station and other potential new locations. So basically this local law is, and I'll let Ken jump in if needed, but this is just to create parking spots for those, those, those electric charging stations. So I will first open this up to comments from the public if any. If not, any comments from the board?
Just so people understand what this is, in order to designate it an EV charging parking spot and not have another vehicle just parking in the same spot, it has to be in our code that this is an electric vehicle parking space. And that's very simple.
Are there limited times on that?
Just when you're charging. So once it's finished charging, I think there's a little grace period there and then you have to move your car.
Because I noticed they're over by the train station and you park by the school.
By the school? Now there's three-
No, there's three at the end.
There's three, there's three locations, there's one in Agawam Park, well actually on the side of Agawam Park where the new bathrooms are, there's one by the train station and then there's the one right back here, so there's-
I'm talking about the train station, by the train station?
Yes.
I mean, if someone pulled in there when it's yesterday, are they allowed to be in there for that?
Not in the, not in that spot, we're in front of the charging station, no.
Because it's having to be a person in there?
Yes. Actually, they know if it's off the hook and you're, it's plugged into a car and it's not charging, after a certain amount of time, you will be charged for that time. So it's monitored actually by the, the company itself.
Oh, it is.
Mm-hmm.
I just picture people over there charging up their cars and then leaving and going back to their own driveway.
Well, when they, when they see the charge on their car, they'll find out that you can't do that. Yes, it is gonna happen.
It's a good point actually. It says in the, it says in the law four hours, but I could totally see somebody just plugging in the car and coming back in a week later, it's more than amply charged, but-
Even instead of plugging in at home, plugging in over there and then going back home.
So they will be charged?
They're garbage, in the garbage cans in the village.
Right.
They're really garbage, so it doesn't surprise me that they wouldn't do that.
Right.
I mean, I'm sure they will, but that's my point.
So that is being monitored and you, there's a little grace period after it stops and then they'll be charged accordingly.
Right.
They'll get the drift of it the first time and when they see the charge.
Do we get any of that though or is it just the compact?
No, we get-
We get some of it, yeah.
Are we gonna have TCOs patrol that area as well?
Yeah. We can have our TCOs patrol the area, they can obviously take inventory, and I also use them, they're pretty good. I plugged my car in, went to Village Hall, came back about three hours later and I had almost a full charge in, so, in the car, so-
I did notice that the stations are different, is it two different companies right now? Because I see that some of, some of the stations are differently designed.
Some of them I think are high-speed.
Yeah, some of them are high-speed, there's actually three different levels and you pay according to the level that you charge, so I think it's-
It's more expensive for the high-speed than it is-
Right.
That will be labeled according to the parking space as well, it'll be labeled or not?
I think it's on the machine.
It's on the machine.
Okay.
And there's, there's an app that you can download as well. I'll tell you what the app is called, I took about five dollars to almost fully charge my car, it's called ChargePort. And it's really, really easy to use, you download the app, you type in the number that the machine is, you input your credit card or use Apple Pay and then boom, you can leave and then your car is being charged. That was a great, great point Nancy, thank you for bringing it up. You must have done this a few times before, so.
Should we note her as public comment for the public hearing?
Yeah.
Yes, we'll do that. Thank you Nancy. Okay, if there's no additional public comment or comment from the board, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing regarding local law eight dash two thousand twenty-two. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 So we have one communication to the board from Linda Cabot.
Mayor, that was actually a comment for the public hearing on the rental registry, so we're just gonna add that as a comment.
All right.
She, Linda Cabot is a voter and she is in favor of the rental registry. We're just gonna note that and we'll add that to the board.
Okay, thank you very much. So we'll move forward to the next portion of our meeting, which is the suggested resolutions. And I'll let Charlene take the first one from here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution number one, resolved that the claims for the warrant dated May twelfth, two thousand twenty-two, totaling nine hundred and eighty thousand, six hundred and sixty-three hours and seventy-eight cents, warrant B seventeen, General Fund, one million, two hundred and eleven thousand, nine hundred and eighty-seven dollars and fifty-eight cents, warrant H ten, Capital Plus, and twelve thousand, six hundred, six hundred and fifty-four hours and eighty-one cents, warrant B twelve, Utilities Fund, and eight hundred and fifty-one dollars, twenty-six cents, warrant CS seven, Special Trust, be audited and a two, zero motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number two, I do have a modification on this resolution. The reading of the minutes for the public sessions, session of March twenty-ninth, was striking here for twenty-six, this is our final stages, not consented for you yet. So on the amended resolution, we have a motion on the amended resolution.
Motion to amend.
And a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, on the amended resolution, I resolve, Board of Trustees, the minutes of the meeting of public session on March twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-two are dispensed and the minutes are accepted as filed with the village administrator and actions taking at that meeting are hereby ratified and on the amended resolution, you have a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number three, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton, hereby approve local law six dash two thousand twenty-two, whose local laws will then village code to get a rental registry, or more specifically, that's a registry and permit process with village rental properties, Southampton Village, special land use department, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
No, it's like my initial, my previous comments.
So, okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, resolution number four, the Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton, hereby approve local law five dash nine twenty-two, the proposal to amend village code, chapter seventy-three, the landscapers, seventy-eight, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number five, resolved, Board of Trustees of the Incorporated Village of Southampton, hereby approve local law five dash nine twenty-two, the proposal to amend village code by getting chapter one-ten, four-six, dash forty-six, electric vehicle parking of chapter one-ten vehicles and traffic.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number six, whereas on or about January twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-two, Southampton Village Police Radio Operators Association, or PROVA, filed the grievance with the village administrator, Charlene Campbell, that claiming that the village and the village, and the village Southampton Police Department, SBPD, improperly paid holiday pay to certain members of PROVA. And whereas on or about January twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-two, after denial of PROVA grievance, PROVA appealed the denial to the grievance to the village board pursuant to Article Four, Section Eight C of the Department Agreement between the village and PROVA. And whereas, village board advised PROVA that it would conduct hearing, the party's grievance on rent submissions and further be advised PROVA that its members or representatives could have the opportunity to appear and be heard regarding the grievance at the village board being held on March tenth, two thousand twenty-two. Whereas PROVA and SBPD submitted evidence and argument in writing regarding the grievance to the village board and representatives of PROVA and the SBPD were offered at the March tenth, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of both board. And whereas, the village board has considered the arguments and evidence submitted by PROVA and this SBPD and now be it further resolved, be it resolved that after thorough review of consideration of all evidence and arguments submitted on behalf of PROVA and the SBPD, the reasons set forth more fully in the decision of the Southampton Village Board regarding the grievance appeal dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the village board hereby denies PROVA's grievance and its grievance appeal in its entirety. Further resolved, the village administrator shall transmit a copy of this resolution and the decision of the Southampton Village Board on grievance appeal dated April twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-two, to PROVA president E S V, Daniel Farrell, and to acting chief of police lieutenant, Zim Bertow. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
For a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Resolution number seven, the Board of Trustees authorizes the mayor to sign an agreement between the Village of Southampton and Munistat Services Incorporated by Municipal Fiscal Advisory Services. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Can somebody tell me what this is?
Yes. Or we need a second, then we'll have discussion.
I'll second.
Okay. Munistat is our fiscal advisor, they've been our fiscal advisor for many years. We don't, we see them too often because of the fact that they haven't really issued any debt. They help us in issuing bond indebtedness, they help us in going out to reading agencies in our presentation, but more importantly, they do help us with our annual SCC filing, which is to renew revenue. So they charge a nominal fee for that, there is a part of the agenda package shows the renewal of their agreement and shows their, their charges for various service levels, whatever they provide. So basically there's a Chinese menu, if you will.
So this is a renewal of something they've done for us before?
They've been our fiscal advisors and I've spoken stealthfully, they've been our bond counsel for many years, we have not gone out to the market to issue any debt. We might be doing that with our sewer district at some point in time and they provide free field advisory services and they have actually had some services, advisory capacity, which contains committee on certain structures that-
And others, Stephen? Any other stuff?
Okay, so on the motion?
Aye.
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 All, uh, by, all in favor, any opposed? So. Um, resolution number eight, Board of Trustees authorizes through environmental engineering for environment helping services related to preparation of permitting, design, construction, bid documents for trading activities all town on that it costs not to exceed seventy-nine thousand, one hundred dollars to pay for water quality projects. H eight, H eight one three oh two hundred, be further resolved, authorizes mayor to sign the agreement with environmental services. All in favor? I'm sorry, is there a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number nine, Board of Trustees in two thousand fifteen committed to the town community preservation on today park improvements at Moses Lane Park according to a plan prepared by Array's Design and the town of Southampton is now requesting that this be built. Now therefore, be resolved, Board of Trustees authorize the allocation four hundred thousand dollars first year and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for subsequent years capital reserve for the required improvements that Moses Lane are subject to, misses our friend. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Um, discussion, um. That's fine. So this is me again.
Actually, what, um, from our discussions with the town, um, there was a agreement between the town board at times and, and, um, the village, um, to, um, there's actually an agreement, um, to the acquisition of the property that those, the village committed to that at that point in time. Um, there was a post-plan that was prepared by Array's Design and presented to the town prior, um, to that acquisition. Um, so I don't believe that violating a legal town that acquisition would be, be, um, fortunately, it doesn't sound like we have any, any, uh, any leeway there.
Right, but I, I believe the town may be open to amending, uh, at least what we can put there. Um, I know, um, they, um, there are some residents who would like to see maybe instead of tennis, uh, bocce or, uh, pickleball. I know before I was elected, there was about, plenty of people in here wanting pickleball, so not to say we should pickleball.
I believe, I believe that the, the tennis court that's proposed can be marked for pickleball. I believe that was part of the plan. Um, so I don't, um, I was not aware that the town, we could have a communication.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I'm just suggesting we have a, we have a dialogue.
But they did ask us about this today when we were there in the public session, um, for the, uh,
Because I, I believe the initial plan called for three courts and now it's down to one, but I'm not quite sure.
I think there's three there.
There's three on the plan.
So it's same, we have the same plan. It hasn't changed, so, um, so that's where we are.
So as long as we can discuss open to amending, you know, the man is, yeah, a good start.
So I also, this number here, it's two hundred and fifty thousand for three subsequent years. I, is that?
That we, uh, I believe that the latest estimate that we might only commit to two years, but that might only be two years because I believe that, um, the estimate, the original estimate for these improvements was about six hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
For everything.
For everything. Um, but because some cost of everything, um, being higher, um, uh, Gary Gillespie did go out and get some, um, visit some of the folks and it looks like we'd have to work contract bid on. Um, but he released a new number somewhere around nine thousand.
So just to clarify, so in two thousand fifteen, the, uh, Village Board made this agreement with the town board into a, and they would give us this land. And they never set aside the money?
No.
Okay.
So.
And they never moved forward and then?
With the improvements.
With any, that's right. Well, that I know because when I came in, we were urged to get that park open and I got that park open as the way the village residents wanted the park to be open. Because there was a lot of, uh, opposition to, uh, the Array's Design, uh, plan. Because the people, the residents there are very concerned about the noise that that comes with tennis courts. Uh, there's also tennis courts that are nearby there in, uh, I believe it's off of Bishop's Lane, there's public tennis courts there. And, uh, now, uh, the very, even a bigger concern now is the traffic because you can't even go up and down Moses. So that's something else that we've been, uh, uh, tackling as well.
Uh, one of the alter, alterations to that plan, um, was to, um, basically, um, change the grade of the park, of the tennis courts and plant some trees around it.
Mason plumber.
Yes, to, and that apparently, uh, buffers the noise.
Right.
Um, that forced to become an additional cost.
Because residents are quite sensitive.
That, that's not gonna buffer the noise of the, the ball, but.
So, um, we do have a couple of different options. Unfortunately, the town is, is basically, um, we went to just basically, Steve Phillips and I went to the town board session, public board session today to discuss, um, just the beautification that Mayor Warren had requested on the corner of Old Ridge. And this was the first thing they started doing.
So I'm just suggesting that open the dialogue and see where we can go.
We could open a dialogue. They want us, they want to see action at this point in time.
I understand.
So, um, any other discussion on the resolution?
I'll just add a few, few quick points. I, I think that first, uh, going back to this, um, the Moses Lane Park, I think a lot of the residents enjoy it. But I think everyone agrees that we could improve it. So I actually first wanted to, uh, thank, uh, trustee Resta when, when she was first elected in two thousand twenty. The park, there was a vacant piece of land there. There was, there wasn't any, anything going on there. She came in, she worked with Gary and Steve Phillips, head of our parks department, she rolled up her sleeves, and first and foremost, got the park open, um, to which a lot of residents enjoy. It's a passive park, it's quiet. Um, uh, everyone from, you know, uh, elementary school students to seniors really enjoy it. But it certainly, uh, we certainly can improve it. Uh, and we are gonna rely on our residents, especially near this park, to give us input. Because we wanna make sure that we can satisfy our commitment that this, this board did not do, but you know, two thousand fifteen or so when the land was acquired, there was a commitment from this village. And so we have to fulfill that commitment, even though we didn't ourselves make it because we represent the village. Uh, so in order to fulfill that commitment, uh, of course, we needed to earmark, uh, the funds for the improvement. I think that everyone would be of, in support of improving the park. Uh, but at the same time, we're absolutely going to require, uh, and ask for the input of the residents. Um, I just actually saw somebody the other day, as I was getting a cup of coffee, who lives nearby, and she actually expressed interest, uh, in helping out. And I think that a lot of people would like to help out here. We have great residents, uh, who, uh, have great ideas. And so, uh, we certainly wanna beautify this park, get the input from residents, and at the same time, uh, satisfy the commitment from the town. We also need to satisfy this commitment from the town because as everyone knows, uh, the town board oversees, uh, the CPF fund. And we have a lot of requests going into the CPF fund, especially for land for our sewer. Uh, so, uh, this board has really improved the relationship with the town. We have a nice relationship with the supervisor, um, and, uh, we have a nice relationship separately with the town trustees. And we wanna keep that good relationships going. Uh, I'm sorry, we would like to keep those good relationships going in, in the right direction. Uh, and, and I think this, uh, this helps out. Again, if any residents have any questions, they can feel free to reach out. But we'd like to assure our residents, uh, that on the one hand, again, we have to satisfy our commitment to the town, a commitment that none of us made, none of us were in the board at this time, yet at the same time, also make sure, uh, that our residents, uh, have something that they enjoy and that does not affect their quality of life. So, uh, we hope like some of the legislation we just passed, you know, we'll thread the needle and make sure that we can do the right thing, so. Sorry for the long-winded.
It's okay.
Explanation.
Okay, so on the motion?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay.
Okay, resolution number ten. Um, Board of Trustees hereby authorize the mayor to sign an agreement with Warren Thunder Media, although advertisement on home head dated at eighty-seven and ten, home court located in Meadow Lane, Southampton, New York. Uh, the revenue of, uh, we're, we're going to be charged, uh, received from this, uh, contract that they have signed with an advertiser, R D A. Um, they're, they're actually, uh, we originally had proposed a fifteen thousand dollar per month, um, commitment. If we actually net ten thousand of that because they, Warren Thunder Media has to actually do the work and paint it and then restore it back to the original, uh, payment loan in there. So, um, again, we do have the lease, they're ready to sign. We're hoping it's just gonna be a pilot program for this year and see, you know, how it, how it, how it goes. It's something that no one will be, uh, no one should really see it from street level. The only time you'll see it is from the sky. So, um, it might be something that, uh, would be beneficial for the village. So.
It's dark, it's dark side, wind outside.
Yes, there's no lighting there. So, um, so it'll only be, uh, visible during the day. So, um, anyway, so do we have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number eleven, the Village Board of Trustees directs finance department to make the, the following budget modification from line of, uh, A seven one one zero point four one, parks, supplies and materials, five thousand dollars. Um, A eight five seven six zero point four shade tree contractual services, the amount of ten thousand dollars. Budget line A seven one one zero four point four four parks contractual services, the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. To line A seven one one zero parks, point two parks equipment in the amount of five thousand dollars. A seven one one zero point four one parks supplies and materials in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And budget line A eight five six zero point four shade tree contractual in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars. I know that Mr. Phillips has been very busy moving money around to get everything beautified, beautiful for the, uh, upcoming season. So he has been working extremely on this budget mod, where all of this applies. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twelve, resolve the Board of Trustees directs finance department to make filing or budget mo- modification from budget line A sixteen twenty point two buildings, equipment in the amount of twenty thousand, nine hundred dollars. Uh, A sixteen twenty point one three buildings seasonal slash port time in the amount of five thousand dollars. A sixteen twenty point four five two buildings, such training, training conferences in the amount of fifteen hundred dollars to A sixteen twenty point four four buildings contractual services in the amount of sixteen, seventeen thousand, six hundred dollars. A sixteen twenty point four six buildings miscellaneous in the amount of three hundred dollars. Line A sixteen twenty point four eight buildings fuel gas in the amount of three thousand dollars. And A sixteen twenty point one two buildings overtime in the amount of six thousand five hundred dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number thirteen, Board of Trustees hereby approves the acceptance of the application filed by the Southampton African American Museum host's twenty twenty-two annual, first annual Juneteenth celebration held on Friday through Sunday, June seventeenth through the nineteenth, nineteen twenty-two. And it will take place at the museum and the beach. This pool will include check-ins to read the application fees for the event. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fourteen, resolve Board of Trustees approves the Juneteenth organization to use Agnewon Park for the second annual Southampton multi-functual festival on Saturday, July thirtieth, at twenty, twenty twenty-two, ten AM, six PM, featuring live entertainment. Be further resolved, Board of Trustees authorizes an allocation of one thousand dollars to the Juneteenth Association for the Minor, from the Minority Affairs account, offset the expenditures upon submission of receipt. Uh, is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number fifteen, resolve Board of Trustees approves the Southampton High School Oceanography Class, host's beach cleanup on Saturday, June fourth, twenty twenty-two, from nine AM to twelve PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number sixteen, resolve Board of Trustees approve Southampton Village P V A to host a village-wide beach cleanup on Sunday, June fifth, from nine, nine AM to twelve PM. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number seventeen, resolve that the Board of Trustees approve Southampton Road Society's second annual road day held on Saturday, June eleventh, twenty twenty-two. This will last throughout the day in conjunction with the Rogers Memorial Library. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolve, uh, resolution number eighteen, resolve Board of Trustees approves Our Lady of the Hipps School through Agnewon Park on Wednesday, June eighth, ninth, twenty twenty-two, ten AM to one PM, host's annual field day, approximately one minute. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number nineteen, Board of Trustees approves the Hope for Depression Research Foundation run, uh, Saturday, August seventh, twenty twenty-two, eight AM to twelve PM, start and finish Agnewon Park. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty, Board of Trustees approves their request, send Samuel Tran, Tran, Boy Scout Chief, Port Eden, Frida, host and Eagle Scout Port of Honor Ceremony in Agnewon Park on Saturday, July twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, from nine AM to four PM. One hundred and fifty guests, please note that tent holding chairs and tables are requested for guests and will be made, will be notified. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Discussion. Where is chief, uh, for any brief?
I think they're in a base. Um, they are providing their own tent, holding chairs, they just wanted buildings grounds to be notified at their rates. So you don't have to rest. So all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution number twenty-one, whereas the Village of Southampton has been accepted to participate in Cornell University Movement Management Internship Program, which provides an engineering student intern to, uh, and software to prepare a village-wide pavement management program, inventory and assess the condition of roadways and drainage, engine system maintenance, scheduling of paving of village streets. Now therefore, be resolved, Village Board approves the hiring of Cornell student intern, temp, Joseph Cooper Gates at a rate of eighteen dollars per hour effective May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, and authorizes attendance along with the Highway Department D P W representative at the Cornell Training Camp for May twenty-fifth, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two, will be in New York. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Quick discussion. Um, will Village, I mean, um, will Village be reimbursed for, um, the elevator, or is it, or?
No, there's no.
We're, we, what happens with these programs, and this was recommended, uh, to us, is that, um, we are accept, we apply, we're accepted. And they provide us their software and their student, their engineering students to prepare the pavement management. But we have to.
We're paying for it.
We pay eighteen, we have to pay eighteen dollars an hour.
That's the exchange.
That's the exchange. So all, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Um, resolution number twenty-two, whereas President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation back of January first, eighteen sixty-three. And whereas on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, Union General Gordon Franger was dispatched to Galveston, Texas to enforce the Emancipation Proclamation and subsequently, last enslaved people in Galveston decree. And whereas June nineteenth, this has become known as Juneteenth and is widely recognized as a celebration of the church. Whereas, effective October fourteenth, twenty twenty, New York State recognized Juneteenth as holiday for employees of the state. And whereas, effective June seventeenth, twenty twenty-one, federal government recognized Juneteenth National Independence Day or June nineteenth as a U S federal holiday. And whereas, Southampton Board of Trustees wishes to recognize Juneteenth as a holiday in twenty twenty-two for the Village employees. And whereas, holidays are mandatory sub, a mandatory subject of what targeting which requires negotiation to each of the villages units. Therefore, be resolved that Village of Southampton shall recognize Juneteenth, twenty twenty-two, as a village holiday and be further resolved that Village employees who observe this setting holiday in accordance with their respective, uh, or agreements and or Village policy be resolved that this topic shall be subject to, to subject change by the Village Board for certain. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-three, the Board of Trustees authorizes the allocation. Oh, this is actually, this is resulted in the added price of eighty.
Motion to table?
Motion to table, resolution number twenty-three.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-four, resolve the board trustees direct finance department to make all budget modification online, eight forty-five forty point four nine ambulance clothing in the amount of ten thousand dollars to eight forty-five forty point two ambulance equipment in the amount of ten thousand dollars. Is there a motion?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution number twenty-five, board trustees approve the Juneteenth application holds the beach on Saturday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, from six p.m. to eleven p.m. for a hundred and fifty guests, party moving, be coordinated, exception to parking, those should be specifically displayed on vehicles during the application. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes the, the, uh, resolution.
Thank you very much. There are no, uh, appointments tonight, and so we'll move to comments from board members. Uh, first is trustee Resta.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first, I'd like to congratulate Alex once again, uh, as being employee of the month. Uh, he's, uh, really made quite an impression, not only, uh, with his coworkers, but, uh, the residents that come in. And, um, he's, uh, been great, uh, helping to guide them through the process of, uh, submitting plans and permits and everything else. So once again, congratulations, uh, Alex. I, um, on Thursday, June ninth, uh, the village of Southampton is going to be hosting, uh, well, actually baseline health, I think it's baseline health, right?
Base line health.
Uh, will be coming in and they're going to come in, uh, with the bus and, uh, they will be, um, uh, there's a lot of, there's comfort, you could get, uh, blood, uh, work, medical, physical work, ultrasound im- imaging, certain testing. So, uh, this is going to be provided, uh, this is successful. Uh, they will, uh, perhaps come behind village hall so that village hall could participate or the police department. And it's a great way to, uh, just step up. It's very convenient to, uh, uh, so people are encouraged to, uh, uh, go for physical, um, um, exams.
For staff too.
For staff.
Yes.
For staff.
And village employees.
Village employees. So there's, uh, instructions on there. There's going to be flyers that are handed out, but I just think it's, uh, it's a great, uh, thing that the village is doing for, uh, its employees. So I wanted to share that with the public. Uh, thank you, uh, to the Gasly Task Force, especially to, uh, Christian P Co. Um, it, uh, it was something that was very hard to do and, uh, I was in touch with everyone from the task force because we, uh, um, the mayor and I had assembled this, um, task force to handle this. It was, um, we knew that not everybody was going to be a hundred percent satisfied, but it was just wonderful to see everybody come together and, uh, and there was a compromise that both sides are pretty happy, uh, but, uh, both sides also understand the other side's point of view. So, uh, thank you for, uh, Christian for leading that and to, uh, all those that, uh, participated. Um, and I'd just like to say I'm very excited about the camp program, uh, and I look forward to, uh, uh, meeting Joseph Gates and, um, maybe I'll even see him running around town, making, uh, maps of all the streets and things. But, um, this Cornell pavement management internship program is terrific. I'd just love to see, uh, young people getting involved with, uh, projects like this and, and, uh, working with the municipality like ours. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, trustee Resta. Trustee Brown?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first like to thank the mayor and the trustees for taking the time to work deeply into the, uh, registration for the summer rental. As doing the research, uh, I do see that we happen to have mostly and respecting and honoring our, our residents and that it is at hand that we want to make sure that they're protected. And I want to thank the mayor and the trustees for all putting in their, um, recommendations and that this has been finalized. And I'm quite excited and thank the mayor and the trustees for the support of recognizing and honoring Juneteenth. Thank you all so very much.
Thank you, trustee Brown. Trustee McLaughlin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I too would like to say thank you to all of our, um, employees. I, I see them out every day, the parks and, and and the, um, utility working on the, um, around the trees to, uh, do some new brickwork. So thank you for that. Um, you guys are doing a great job. Keep it up. And also, um, I was very fortunate to attend the, uh, the annual skate dinner from Rotary. I know it's been not every year because with COVID, it was a bit of a delay. But, um, it was a great event, a great turnout, and I was glad to see, uh, a good, um, a good, uh, attendance from all, from all the, uh, Rotary members and the public. All, um, the proceeds go to, uh, go to scholarships and for our local, uh, high schools. So, um, I, again, I'm glad to see the turnout. I'm glad to see, uh, the, uh, post-COVID, uh, events are trying to come back from prior years. So thank you to all of them and it's great to see the weather getting better and, uh, hope to, uh, see the seasons progress and, um, so on and so forth. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee McLaughlin. Trustee Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, some of the comments this evening I, were about government regulation and unnecessary government regulation, and I'm, I'm certainly sensitive, uh, to those feelings. A few years ago, I experienced in my own business, a requirement that we changed from using, uh, plastic, uh, shopping bags to, to recyclable paper. I thought that was a pretty good idea, even though it cost us some money to have to make that changeover. On June first of this year, we will no longer be able to sell helium balloons in, in my business, which will cost me substantially more than the bag van, several thousand dollars a year. And again, uh, my feeling was, yes, probably some balloons do get released and end up on the beach. Uh, a whole lot more plastic bottles get discarded and end up on the beach. And if we're really going to make a regulation, maybe we should regulate plastic bottles other than balloons. On the other hand, if one balloon ends up on the beach and causes a seagull to die because it gets plastic in its space, I, I didn't want to be part of that. Uh, so yeah, government regulation forced me to do something that I probably wouldn't have done anyway. At some financial cost. But I want to be on the right side of ecology, of taking care of our world, of, of just trying to make this village a better place. Uh, so the leaf blower thing, yeah, uh, it's not just the first time this has come up. And it's not just five people in the village who want it to happen. It's a lot of people, but even if, even if it weren't a lot of people, if, they do pollute, they do spew out stuff. And yes, lithium ion batteries are bad. Uh, and you got to come up with this weighing of what the most environmental damage is, but quality of life, safety of our people, concern for the environment, concern for the people, just wanting to sit outside and not have to listen to a swarm of angry bees. Um, got to come down. It's government regulation, you know, we, we had to come up with a compromise and, and, um, I think we came up with a good one. It's not easy. We don't sit up here and leave this meeting room and try to come up with ways to make things difficult for people. And that's for sure. We, we sit here and we try to do things that will make this village a better place, try to figure out how we can get our sewer system built, how we can get the town to give us the dough for it, how we can clean up Lake Agawam without spending a zillion dollars and make up for all the stuff that's gone on for many, many years. Um, it's not easy and we really do try to do the best thing and listen to the people and do what we think is right. So I, I appreciate everybody's understanding and, uh, support in, in our efforts to do that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, trustee Stevenson. And I'll just, uh, wrap this up, uh, by, uh, also, uh, echoing some of our sentiments to our valuable village employees. In particular, I wanted to, uh, thank, uh, Steve Phillips, head of our parks department, and, uh, Bill Banks, who are, you know, out there, uh, doing our plantings, uh, beautification, and really to the entire parks department. But, uh, I've, I've had a great, uh, run the last, uh, couple of weeks, uh, working, uh, with Steve and, and Steve, uh, you know, works directly with his team. So just wanted to applaud them for their, uh, hard work. Uh, I went over to, uh, Southampton, uh, hospital, uh, just a few, uh, days ago and, uh, wanted to, uh, recognize Nurses Appreciation Week. Before that, it was Teachers Appreciation Week, so we went over and thanked all of our nurses, uh, who, uh, basically, uh, only really started getting recognized just, uh, during the beginning of the pandemic, but, but the reality is that, uh, there's a short supply of nurses. They work, uh, long hours, extra hard and don't really get the, uh, recognition or pay that they deserve. So thank you to our nurses and teachers respectively. And then lastly, just wanted to wrap up. We're making great progress, uh, with our sewer task force. Wanted to thank Paul Travis, the chair. Uh, we are, um, cautiously optimistic that we'll have, uh, some announcement, announcements to make. Uh, we're, we're just inching our way closer, uh, to, um, uh, basically building our, uh, our, our sewer system. It's still a long way out, but some of the most important steps, uh, were, uh, were, were nearing, uh, the finish line on some of these important initial, uh, steps that, uh, uh, we're a little, we're excited about. So thank you very much. The board tonight, uh, was a, uh, a good meeting. Uh, had a lot of, uh, people come out and, uh, just wanted to thank our residents, our board, our village of staff and employees, uh, for, uh, helping us, uh, do this meeting tonight. So, uh, with that being said, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of discussing, uh, discussing contractual litigation and specific village personnel matters.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, welcome. We're returning to, uh, public session. Time is nine twenty-nine P M. So I'll make a, uh, motion, uh, to, uh, return to public session. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, we have one, uh, resolution we will need to pass. Ken, I'll let you state that for us and then I'll make the motion.
Okay. So where, whereas there has been litigation filed against the, um, village of Southampton uh, in the name of Charles Lane versus the village of Southampton, the board, Charlene Kegel and myself, actually Kenneth Gray, as village attorney. Um, now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the village authorizes a settlement not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, um, for the settlement of this matter for all causes of action. Do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.